Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. You have in the 20s there, we're gonna start with class sizes. I just handed out, uh, it must be about three sheets to you. First one I'm gonna go over, it looks like this, it has elementary recommendations on it. Kindergarten, I don't know the exact number yet, we haven't done registrations, so I'm just gonna do a guess in there. First grade, we know it's gonna be about 50 because of pretensions and... That becomes a borderline number, obviously. The one thing about that though is because of the... If you don't remember, we were talking about last year or the year before, or the year before that. We do get two, titled two-a-day money. That is for class size reduction money and it's based on grade reviews lunch. We have enough to pay for one teacher. This year's sixth grade has that teacher this year, obviously going into the seventh grade. So that class, the next class in line for that would be that first grade. So we could keep that at three sections if the board so chose.
Where do we start with kindergarten this year?
Fifty-four.
Where, you know, where are we at right now? Cause we had a couple come in and a couple leave, I mean...
Fifty-four.
Yeah, if we just people out.
Yep. Uh, second grade, I recommend you stay at three, third grade same. Fourth grade... They currently have four sections this year. That class will be sixty-two next year, so I recommend going down to three. Fifth grade currently has three sections. Um, with that fourth grade going up, others say they recommend they go to fourth grade, that's a wash. And we have a larger sixth grade heading out and sixty-five replacing them for three, so it would be a total reduction of one point. Any thoughts, questions, concerns?
What's the census say for this year in our district? What kind of ground coming in, do we know?
Yeah, there's, uh...
The closest having to here.
Well, there's a hundred and two names on there, that doesn't mean that they're all here anymore. I think sixties are pretty strong numbers. Based on what's in our four-year-old program.
Oh, I forgot, that gives us a little bit of...
Nothing? All right. Moving on, this little sheet that looks like this, this little spreadsheet that has some highlights on it. So this is junior high and we also have some... Randomary numbers that are kinda high, so I'll let Todd speak to that.
Um, you'll just kind of look, these are the registrations we have for next year under the grade columns request. And, um, currently, these two grades are having four sections, most of their core classes. And, um, the, the numbers that you can kinda see that I have highlighted going across are the numbers that I have in question. Currently in speech, eighth grade, there's eighty-nine kids registered for speech next year. Currently sitting with three sections. I've put the sections at, right, about thirty, give or take. Um, the scheduling, when we run the schedule, it can be a thirty-five and a twenty-five, you know, to balance each other out with the schedule. So that, I have a question on whether we should go to add another section in there. Cause currently, like I said, they're, they're in four sections. Um, the facts number, fact seven is listed at eighty-one there. And with the lab class of that size, if we broke it into four sections of twenty, it'd be a lot better for the, the facts class. But again, um, currently I've got it listed down at three there. Math seven, again, core class, numbers would be approaching twenty-nine, twenty-nine, twenty-eight in that, in that group. So I've highlighted that one for discussion and then down below the science and global studies, you can see they're all around just about ninety. Broke it into three sections each. Like giving numbers around thirty. Again, with scheduling, you could have some thirty-fives and twenty-fives in there depending upon when we run the schedule. So I guess, um... My recommendation would be to push those to four sections for next year. But, you know, I want the board's input, obviously.
What's recommended by your...
We have classes of thirty in the junior high, we do.
Also teaching at that, at that level?
Well, I would say, I mean, the teaching's great, but, but when you get thirty-seventh or eighth graders in a classroom, there can be, um, different, uh, things going on in there. You know, puberty's kicking in and a lot of different activities are going on. So I would say, um, you know, that in a class of thirty versus, yeah, mid twenties, you're gonna see a difference in behaviors. And, and I think the education could have an impact.
So your, what's your opinion on class size?
Um, my opinion, we can have the smallest class size as possible.
So what would you recommend?
Well, I, I would recommend that these go down to up to four sections, uh, so we'd get in the, you know, middle to mid twenties with some of them.
Just for the board's information, while you, before you discuss that, um, when you're looking at splitting a class, depending on who's teaching it, it's what's at ten thousand dollars?
But it's gonna create a, a better teaching environment by having a bigger size.
Smaller class size you got, the value is, but it's all looked on.
When you have other things here, like computer skills, health. Why, yeah, I suppose that's a little bit different, but, I mean, is there a concern with those ones or?
Well, we have thirty, uh, thirty, I think, two computers in the one computer class that we have. You know, again, they're, they're working on a keyboard, it's not a core subject. We aren't getting, I think they're getting a pretty good learning environment. We had a couple close to thirty in there before. I mean, yeah, we could, we push them all to four, you know, all those numbers. But I think I was focusing more on the core classes or the lab class.
I mean, it's a conversation for money, but I mean, I look, we're kinda always... Their motto or mantra was smaller class sizes, I mean, but that was kind of... We've always struggled with that, right? I mean, what is that number?
I mean, I just, I can't, you know, it's hard enough to stomach, I think, a larger class size period for anything, whether it's computers or anything and, um... But to have a larger class size with the population of students that you're talking about and knowing all the things that go on with that. When it's math and the science and, I mean, those, the, those core subjects that... I mean, if they fall behind in that stuff, it's so hard that they get caught up and they have many, many more years of schooling left. So I don't... You know, and this is where I lean towards our fabulous administration to figure out how they can make it work. But I, I just don't see how we can not, not increase it to the four, I mean, I just, I can't.
We can maybe work it either way, it's just a place and it's...
I, I know, I know.
And do we have money right now? Yes. Will it run out someday if we keep doing this? Yes.
Yep.
Well, yeah, we're gonna... These, these couple sections are, are big classes, so we're gonna have the same conversation every year until they're seniors. That's the reality. Seven, seven classes are recommended and what did you say, seven to ten thousand dollars or seven thousand?
For each one that you split, it's seven to ten thousand, depending on who's teaching, it's seventy-seven to ten thousand.
So fifty to seventy grand. Well, that's right, that's why I'm just breaking it down, right? Fifty to seventy grand. So we have a net, we have one FTD reduction on Franklin, right?
Yep.
And then possibly this is gonna be about seven. Seven classes, right?
No, it's a one point two.
Four point two. Every class is a point two.
Five, five sections makes one teacher. But currently these sections are, you know, the grades are in four most of the places as well.
So just, just for argument's sake, based on your recommendation, it'd be a one point two FTD increase on the junior high?
Well, that's actually not a total decrease from this current year. I don't have that actual number, but I know it's... It, the numbers on the sheet are actually reflecting just a little bit of a decrease FTD's.
Oh.
I would say this is very close to being about a push for next year. If, 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 no, okay. But it, it's a...
Would you, what would you be explaining a push for next year, what's up?
Well, this year we have a lot of these classes right now, we're in four sections. And the numbers on the sheet are reflected at threes. So, but if we go up to, yes, it is a one point two, you know, increase over what's on the sheet.
Okay, well, let's go to high school, I guess.
All right, go ahead, Eddie.
Well, at the high school, um... Yeah, at the high school, I think if, and I don't have the, but I think it is a decrease from what I had last year for, for staff here. Cause like I don't have...
Not much.
But there, it is a decrease though.
Point four.
Point four? So I think what we have on here, um, I still have seventy-five, about seventy-five students that I need to talk to and look at their schedule with them. Make sure they have everything they want, fill in all the gaps. So I still, um, you know, there are some low class sizes like exploring fiction, fourth hour, and fitness and wellness, fourth hour. Eleven and ten, fitness and wellness, third hour. But I, I know I have a group of students that will be taking those classes, I just haven't gotten to talk to them quite yet. So I feel quite confident that they'll come up. Small engines, first semester, it only has five students right now, but again, I think some of the students that I haven't been able to get to will take that class. And then also that is paired with Masabi East and Dave Jansen, the counselor at Masabi East, said he does have students registered for small engines. The woodworking number is low at this time, um, so that may be one, you know, if I can't get more in there, that we may not have to be able to offer.
Is that a cooperative or not?
It is not a cooperative, that's just our own students.
Have you heard anything on George Harrigan retiring again this year or?
Yes, he wants to.
He wants to.
He's told me that he wants to not be here next year.
But he's never said he doesn't.
He said he won't, he didn't say he wouldn't come back, but...
Which we appreciate, but... But having him back and paying him what he, whatever we're paying him, is he, is his, does his... Does he attract students, you know what I'm saying, to that program because of his teaching ability?
I think so. I think there's, there's kids that, you know, were happy that he's gonna be teaching automotive. We weren't able to offer automotive this year. And, uh, so a lot of kids were wanting to get into that. And when they knew that it was going to be Mr. Harrigan, they were, they were glad to hear that. And of course I said, I don't know if it's going to be Mr. Harrigan, if we find somebody else, you know, but I think Mr. Harrigan would come back if we need to be for a semester. But the numbers, yeah, the numbers after Calcoman kids are registered right now in, in, in the class.
It's five for small engines and ten for automotive? What does he teach? I mean, he just teaches...
He's got all of them right now, all the strike classes. So we only have four for woodworking?
Right now, I still have about seventy-five students to talk to, but it's hard when it's that two-hour block too, a lot of them, it's hard to get into their schedule when it's a two-hour block cap class. In fact, welding in Virginia has always been two hours and they switched it to a one-hour block next year because kids just weren't getting into it. And she has found that a lot more kids are able to take it now that it's a one-hour block, one-hour class like normal, so...
What is the normal number that we usually have for, for woodworking? We're looking at four and all, we haven't bought a interview yet.
Yeah, I mean, at least I would say fifteen would be good. But I don't know what the normal numbers have been since last year, since the first year. So I'm not sure how high those numbers have been in the past.
So you got five, you got five people out of seventy-five in the small engines, right? Five, I mean, five out of seventy-five, but you...
I have, I have to talk to seventy-five, so I've talked to...
So that number could increase.
Yeah, he could, yeah.
It probably will.
How many people I roughly have, do we know that are on here? How many kids? Well, I guess I can look at, I mean, one period. And you have about...
How many kids are registered already?
About two, two hundred, I would say, that I've talked to, about two hundred kids.
Out of how many is in the high school right now?
I thought we registered kids of then generated.
Well, they're registered, yes, they, they're registered, but then with me talking to the kids, like if they didn't get a class and I gotta put a class in there. So like when I get a schedule, if, it...
There's conflict.
Yeah, the computer prints it out, like for instance, so there was a whole first hour, a whole third hour, a whole fourth, sixth hour and seventh hour. So then I gotta sit with the kid and say, okay, what class do you want, first hour, these are the options. So, I mean, this is when I say like I've talked to every kid and they know what their schedule's gonna look like. I have about seventy-five that I have left to do. Okay.
How many are in these classes this year? Like small engines, do we know?
I can look it up.
It's under, it's under tons.
Cause I, I think what I'm saying, I think even with Masabi East communication...
Masabi did not send anybody this year.
This year?
Because we had it third and fourth hour. And Dave said you have to put it first and second hour. So that's why I put it first and second hour this year and made sure it stayed there. So that's why the numbers were lower, cause he did have, he had about ten kids that were ready to come over. But it, I didn't realize it had to be first hour till we already did the schedule. So then this year I made sure it was first. And so I think he's gonna have strong numbers because last year they weren't able to send kids. So I think we're gonna have numbers for small engines. It's the woodworking one that I'm gonna be a little bit more concerned about.
So how many, how many registered kids do we have for like the whole class of ninth grade coming up? Do we know, I mean, roughly, could that potentially be coming up? That's in eighth grade now, then going into ninth grade, potentially, what are the, what is the numbers?
Four, for the...
Sixty-five.
How much is it?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five in ninth?
Two in ninth grade, there's actually no...
How many for ten?
How many are in ninth grade this year?
Yes, sir.
Seventy-nine.
Seventeen?
Seventy-three.
And coming into the tenth grade year for next year?
Seventy-two.
And I'm looking up George Harrigan's number for...
We had ten for first semester in small engines and there were eighteen in woodworking, first semester.
How many, how many in woodworking?
Eighteen this year. And I, I mean, there was, so many have registered for, but they just can't get it till I can sit with them. If they really want woods, they'll make their schedule work. They'll say, okay, I'll take that a different year because I really want woods. So I just have to, and I got about seventy-five kids left. And I think there's gonna be, you know, six or seven of them that would, I could get into woods.
So numbers, so looking at other classes?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, numbers are all looking pretty good, we're feeling pretty comfortable with. I mean, I'm doing a quick scan, but I'm not seeing any thing up for it. I mean, the choir and the band are always, we know that those are always high numbers because you usually need the numbers in those kinds of...
And like geometry, first, first hour has thirty-five kids. Well, I'll be able to get that down because there's two other sections. So we just have to, once we meet with every student and look at the numbers, we'll manipulate it so that there's not so much in that first section.
Okay, so that one, you would shift some of the kids into the second?
Yeah, and I mean, if it was only a, what we call a singleton class, like if it was only offered that one hour and we had thirty-five, then I may ask, well, can we split that one? But I'll be able to balance it out because there's two other sections for it. And I think that that was, um, the case with Mrs. Fred, I mean, she's got forty in world history nine right now. But we will look at those ninth graders and move some of them to the other world history first hour, which only has twenty-four. So we can balance it out a little bit. So as long as there's more than one section of it offered, we can balance it. And the ones with the TP after it, um, like for personal finance, there's a TP, that means it's telepresence. And there's sixteen, and this doesn't reflect on your sheet, but there's four that are taking it from another, well, actually, there's eight students from area schools that wanna take it via telepresence. Some would try to get just four in that section and four in another section. And criminal justice, there's ten of our students scheduled in for it, but then there's two telepresence students that want to take it. And intro to programming, um, we have fourteen wanting it right now that are scheduled into it. And Masabi East had fourteen kids that also wanted it and I think Virginia had, or no, Mount Iron had one kid.
Oh, telepresence is going good.
Well, we, we haven't only offered one hour with calculus. And next year we have two students wanting to take calculus through telepresence and...
So far, gauge they're passing, there's, it's a medium that's working?
Yes, last year was much better because, um, there weren't as many connection problems and it was just from MIB to here. This year it's Greenway and so Miss Peshal had some, there's been some connection issues, but we figured it out. So it's been going well.
So next year there's a lot more.
Well, next year, yeah.
A little bit more done.
Yep. There'll be four business classes and the one calc, um, calculus class that we will be offering here, that we'll be broadcasting out. And then we have fifteen kids taking digital photography through telepresence and that's Masabi East, first hour. It's down below, it's first hour down below, but we have fifteen kids in it. We're not sending it out though.
So which one will we be sending out again? The business and the calculus?
Well, we'll do the, the personal finance, third and fourth hour there, right in the top. Personal finance, intro to programming, criminal justice, personal finance, so those four right there. Then if you move second hour, go down to where it says calculus, CEP, telepresence, that's our course two that we're sending out. And then we're receiving, um, it's almost to the bottom, the ones that have TP's there. We're receiving Chinese, we're receiving digital photography. And a Spanish three. Yep, and there is, um, I talked to one kid today that wants a jibway, but I told him I haven't put, I have not put it on the schedule yet because we don't know when they're offering it. So we're still waiting for a school district to get back to us when they're gonna be sending out a jibway from I Falls, I believe that's from International Falls. So we might have a couple kids take a jibway through telepresence. So I really don't have any recommendations except for, I mean, I'd like to just, I'd like to keep it. I mean, I'm a little, you know, the woodworking one and two, if I can't get any more kids in there, then I would maybe say that we don't offer that one.
What do we think, are you fresh, will we be to offer it or not? I mean, eight, ten students, is that worth it? Anything below that, maybe not?
We've been doing ten just to try to keep the program alive, but...
Better call the fifteen is probably a deal, but...
Right, I mean, if we did get ten in there.
Is there any other programs, like industrial wise or, you know, small engines, woodworking, automotive, set, any other curriculum that you could offer, that you could offer that maybe might spurs some interest in this type of stuff? Like maybe home maintenance or, I mean...
Yeah, oh, we did offer that, we just don't have enough kids that will take it.
We, we offer quite a bit, but these are just the ones that people signed up for, right?
Yeah, yes.
We still offer Selber's CAD, right? And probably nobody in the office signed up for that this year.
And build the industrial technology numbers, if you add it to the junior high sheet, there's, there's a lot of junior high classes.
So I guess one thing for the board to look at, you look at like eighth grade science, there's only sixty-seven kids in ninth grade next year. So she only had it split into two. It's kind of a high number for a science class.
Which one was that now, Dave?
But, I mean, it's doable, we've done it, but I'm just...
Ninth grade science.
Yeah, he has labs for twenty-eight. So if, you know, sometimes when the eighth graders come over as ninth graders, sometimes we lose, lose a few. So, I mean, we're really pushing that, but he said he can have up to twenty-eight. I mean, we, we do have twenty-nine, I think, in the class right now. And he can take one or two over, but he has enough lab space for twenty-eight kids in the, in the physical science class.
So we're technically short, actually, to just have it in two classes. And we don't have enough.
But that should be like, maybe a conversation when she gets figured out with the rest of the schedule? Or is that just is what it is?
The numbers, yeah, because it's two classes.
It's, it's just, will we lose any kids coming over to ninth grade?
Well, how many are we traditionally losing in the transition from eighth to ninth grade? Do we know that number? Cause that's kind of been...
Three or four. It varies, I mean, last year was a pretty big number, but...
Yeah, I think it was like seven that didn't even step in this building.
But even if we lost and we're still talking about fifty-six, I mean, if we only have space for fifty-six and we have sixty-five kids coming in. I mean, I don't anticipate that we're gonna lose that many. I mean, so I really think that we probably do have to look at having potentially going into a third section then. I mean, I don't want students have to feel the need that they have to share a lab area because we don't have enough labs spots, lab stations for them to be able to work independently.
You guys, as the principals and superintendents, you guys are superintendent in school. Do you guys see any curriculum that you think that would be key to attracting kids to our school or anything that we could offer that might attract kids to our school that we could offer? Did I say that right?
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying, but you know, even like the digital photography, I, I told Mrs. Custer about, you know, we have fifteen kids want digital photography. Maybe that's a class we should offer next year. She's like, yeah, you know, she will, she'll offer it next year for that, but, um... I don't know if there's any other things that kids are telling us that they...
Trying to hone into their interests and what they're expressing.
Right.
The biggest thing is, believe it or not, kids have, when it comes to classes, have just as hard times adults will change. They really do, I mean, when you throw something new at them, it takes a while for it to catch. I mean, kids don't know what they wanna do, which is one of the reasons that we're, put a little plug in for the academy, um, looking at that.
And I mean, we offer, actually, I mean, this is just what people sign up for again, I mean, maybe that'd be an exercise to give new board members like all the courses that we do offer that we just never actually run because people don't...
That's a source one that even, I even had when I came back to Florida. I mean, it is a very, pretty broad range of...
We, we offer so much, our kids don't even pick up. And then we cooperate and we have telepresence and we have CEP classes and, um... And you gotta keep in mind, I mean, there's, there's, there's a couple that are acquired, so then you gotta work all the other electives around that, so... I think there's, yeah, I guess.
And, and there are online classes too, like, if they come to us and say we want to take French three online, and and we technically are, we have to offer it to them or give it to them. So there's even online classes that we're going to be offering because we will teach, teach it here. Then somebody asked me if they could do online German. I said, yes, you can. It's just if they take more than, more than half of the classes online, then we can say, no, you, you have to go to a different district or just go completely online. But if it's one or two courses and they come and say that they want to do a class online, technically have to give it to them. There are lots of options. You have to be able to handle an online class too, of course.
Is there any other district that you know that offers like a basic electricity course?
I don't know of any that, that is offering that.
I mean, you look at the plug for the academies, you know, and you look at that, I mean, you know, when we were, when, I guess, when I was in school, when we had, you know, you could, you could go to, what was it? You could have came to, I think, came to Eble for their carpentry, carpentry. You went to Biwabit for welding and machining. You went to Virginia for, I don't know, they offered some class over there. I mean, I just think that we should be looking into, because if you're gonna, you're going more towards that academy, where it's going to be hands-on, project-based, I mean, we should be looking at that plus all the, you know, plus there's the core curriculum that you have to off, that they have to have. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we should be offering.
That same model that you just described is basically still in place, and we're just, kids are way less inclined to get on a bus or a van or in their car and go anywhere anymore. They just aren't, they won't, they don't even want to go to Gilbert.
I mean, is that your opinion, or is that?
No, we asked them, I mean, they just, they don't even want to go to Gilbert.
Yeah, there are a lot of kids that don't want to go.
They just don't want to, they just want to move.
And then we have less kids than two, I would assume.
I mean, we've got agreements with the college, we've got carpentry program over there that we can send kids to, with welding in Virginia. You know, I won't say no, well, but very few will, and vice versa, they won't come.
So what do you think drives that lack of interest?
I just, and they feel a little disconnected because they're off campus. And when I went with a student from the senior high to Gilbert for Ms. Bass's class, and it was the period of time where the outcomes were made, so they never felt like they knew what was going on. They were missing stuff, so that could be one reason.
And transportation's a big deal here. In our own campus, we got automotives and small engines and carpentry in Gilbert. Just the transferring of kids back and forth, I mean, it's only five miles, but it's half a period.
Well, honestly, I mean, my, my daughter doesn't like missing anything, any part of class, any little part. So if there's going to be anything that's going into another class or going into any, I mean, I can tell you, she will be one that will not go anywhere else outside of our camp, our current campus to take a class because she just doesn't want to miss anything. Whether it's going to be valuable or not, she, it's in her brick, like, she will not, she doesn't want to miss it.
All right, what do you think, we just thought of? Got enough sections here?
I think the core, the core subjects for sure, junior high.
We definitely try to keep the math, you know, remotely, because it's been part of our strategic plan is to raise our test scores. All right, we'll do it. Did you guys have anything to move on? So we talked about confidential, so the last discussion in that, there was question on, should the three be at the same price tag? And there's that stipend issue with the payroll clerk. So you want to know what's in job description? So for the HR director, we require a four-year degree of some type. The bookkeeper, we require a four-year degree in accounting. The payroll clerk, we require a two-year degree.
So the human resource director is just a degree in, is not specific, or does it have to be? Isn't it specific?
It is, it just says it being a degree with previous experience in human resources.
Chip, how many, how many people are in this confidential agreement? How many people, four people? Just kind of wrote some stuff down here. Job descriptions, do you have job descriptions following people? Or was everything changed from prior job descriptions, or?
Two of them were just created, they're new positions, and payroll clerk has not changed yet, but will upon approval of the contract, because a lot of the duties that, a lot of the HR duties that she's currently doing, are not poured to the HR director. And then there's the foreman position, so that hasn't changed.
So is it safe to say the payroll position is going to change to, there's going to be a less workload on that?
Yes.
And that was kind of my point to question, is that the regular meeting is, you know, when our last payroll clerk moved from the business manager position, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but didn't she take some of her duties with her, that she did for a little bit?
Yes.
And then, so that technical position was kind of different when we had a new hire there anyway, for duties and responsibilities. And, and we didn't, we didn't reduce that salary at that time for less responsibilities. And I guess the only other side, you know, from my questioning at the regular meeting was arbitrarily, if we just keep these all the same value, but we have different levels of education or experience requirements. It, it doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me, and I don't under, and that's what I was just trying to reconcile in my mind, is where, where do the numbers came from? And what reasoning were behind them, other than we just think we split up some duties and responsibilities equally? Because I don't feel we did, you know, due to the requirements of that. And I get workload and I get all that too, but there's different experiences that go with different workloads and responsibilities.
And, no, and I'm glad that you brought it up, and just, as I said in that meeting, I am glad you brought it up, and that's why I wasn't so worried of bringing it back here. Because we didn't look at the specific differences within those jobs, and I did look at it as, like, arbitrarily, it's splitting up. But kind of, you know, that these were the positions, they were kind of a mismatch of job duties and all of a sudden, they were dispersed. Putting it very simply. It was probably much more complex than that, but that is how I was looking at it, honestly. So, so no, I'm very glad of having this because it is important, I think, to look at the jobs themselves, the requirements of the jobs themselves, the four-year degree, the two-year degree, the four-year degree, and all of that, so.
My, my biggest issue, I guess, and I get, I get Mike's point about the, about the, you know, how much education is required.
What the heck?
Nobody called me but her.
I'm so sorry, you guys.
Nice.
It was that kind of a day, I'm sorry.
Deliary, I'd like that too. Um, but, you know, I, I understand Mike's point to both how much education is required for each position. I guess my biggest issue was the percentage that was being offered in addition to the bump in the salary. That, you know, I, I had a hard time with that, or I have a hard time with that because there are other people that have stepped up to the plate too, with turnover and things. And I, I don't want to be unfair in giving a stipend to.
Oh, that's a different conversation, I think you might understand, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. So I, that's the part that I didn't.
Try to help you out a little bit. So the board asked me to, because obviously we have two new positions to come up with the salary. So I asked, uh, Art, was there a company of people, you know, where to start? And a bookkeeper, which isn't completely normal in a district of our size, but the circumstance is different with the sharing. Not completely unheard of. Was a little harder for them to figure, but they went with that fifty-three thousand, and that's about what a human resource director is making in a district this size in this state. So those two were the same, but taking the payroll clerk from where that position was, which was above, a little over fifty, fifty-one, or whatever it was, which is average for this area.
Fifty-one was average for what?
For this area, for payroll. The, the question that came in to be, when I sat down and talked with the individual that's in that position right now, she felt that it was unfair that two people just move in arbitrarily more money than she does, and she's been here longer. So I'm having a conversation with her about that. You know, because there is no scientific method for who gets what position either, once this settles. I mean, we're just assuming that, well, we hired a bookkeeper, so he has to kind of be there. We already have a foreman, but that leaves two positions, I mean, one of them has been in that position, and now she's saying, well, if that one is worth more money, I'd rather have that one because I'm kind of doing it without any.
Well, keep in mind, during, throughout this conversation, we did do away with a position also.
Yes.
And that's part of this conversation too, is that we basically, yeah, we're adding.
We had one that we got rid of. It was kind of, and actually, the one that we got rid of was a little more expensive.
But that was time in history, because that was here for thirty years.
So I guess, for me, what, what it comes down to is, so is there a way to make that fair? With acknowledging the fact that the person in that position has been there for more years, has been doing the training, will continue probably doing some training of other individuals, correct?
Yeah, I mean, once the switch is made, I mean, that stuff that she's doing with HR, now she's going to have to share it with somebody.
So did, did she, has she gotten, from the first number that was on the agreement? It was at fifty-one thousand, and then we talked about bumping it up to the other, so was that fifty-one thousand? Was there a percentage of increase?
That was two percent over what she was making.
But at the step, we were talking about the stipend on top of that, was for the, for the amount of time that she has spent in that position doing the extra work, if I remember right.
That's what, that's what we had talked about, then when we came, sat down at the table here, there was, there was an increase in salary. In addition, there was a stipend, a discussion of a stipend, and I guess the initial conversation was, do we, you know, do we offer this wage and this much of a stipend to, to compensate for the extra work that was done? And then the next meeting, it was both. So, like I said, I, when I thought about it, it just doesn't seem fair to other people that have stepped up to the plate. I mean, you know, I, not to call situations out, but, you know, the junior high has had a lot of turnover over there too. And there's been people over there that have stepped up to the plate and took on additional duties and trained people and stuff. And I just don't want to be unfair to other people in the district. I mean, I don't want to cause any hostile work environment or, or anything like that either. So what can we do to, to acknowledge the fact that, you know, the payroll clerk has been here longer?
So, okay, so.
But they wanted to be here.
I don't know if I'm okay with, with those positions. So I didn't, I don't remember having that part of the conversation, but I guess I, in my jobs, I've had people start after me and are coming on, making more money than me. That's just part of professional work, like, that just happens because they have different experiences and different background that they're bringing in, whether they have more work experience that they're coming to the table with, they have a different degree, different, I mean, whatever. They just are coming in with different, or they were much better negotiating pay than I was when I came on board. I mean, for very different reasons. So I, it's not like we're saying, one of our long-term tenured employees, you know, twenty, thirty years, we're completely cutting them off at the knee, saying, here, we're going to bring on a brand-new, brand-new teacher that doesn't have any experience, and we're going to pay them above what a teacher of twenty, thirty years has experience doing. I mean.
Yeah, but that new teacher might have a lot of experience in new technology and.
Okay, but that's still different, yeah, no, not happening. I just, I, it's just, it's, it's the way of life, and again, if there's a difference in degrees, that is reality. We get paid for our degrees, we do, that is how it is.
Our educational facility.
I mean, we get paid for our degrees. We, I, I think we have someone on the agenda that is moving up because they got a higher degree. And that is part of what, I mean, we promote that, and we pay for that.
So let me throw this out there, Lynn. Because it's, because they're not union, those, those individuals that we're talking about today, does that keep them from getting that opportunity to bid on a different job? You know, like, you know what I mean?
Like, would she? Normally like anyone else.
Would, would.
We don't have to.
They don't know that we even have the post, we don't have, have a post yet. They're going to sign somebody.
So, okay. So I guess I'm just wondering then if, you know, we should allow the opportunity.
But they would still have to be qualified and still have to meet the qualifications, just like anyone else that are going to go for that job.
Right, right. And, and, you know, I guess that would be determined in the interview or whatever.
I'm really trying to remove, so I'm really trying to remove.
Personal stuff.
Yes, because Mike reminded us, which is so true, and I, I mean, very, very true. Anytime you're dealing with any of this stuff, you really do have to look at the position and not the person. I mean, it is so true, because we all care, and it is really hard to not.
Look at the person.
Look at the person and not want to just give, because really, like, the people that we know and we get to know. And, but it's really our jobs to look at the position.
Here's an example, I see paras every day performing over and above, and they don't get paid the same as teachers, but they have almost as much contact time with children every day that a teacher does. And because they're at a different level of education and degrees and licensing, we pay them proportionally different. And, like to Kelly's point, I mean, we, if we, if we cared about everybody equally, if that's the way the world was, we'd be paying teacher, or paras the same as a teacher, because they're doing, they're going up and beyond a lot of the situations too. But, and that's what I struggle with about the positions, you know, I mean, it's, and these are salary positions for one. I mean, yes, they have job descriptions, but then I think most of our job descriptions always say, other duties as required or needed or such that, and, I mean, I'd be willing to bet, I mean, do any of these confidential positions, I mean, work over forty hours and not get compensated for it, Jeff? They do, but they get compensated, or they don't get compensated? And, and that's my point.
And that was one of these conversations. I mean, obviously, that was one of the conversations that we were having regarding the, the stipend kind of thing is, is there was a feeling that there was much more than the here and there's over the forty hours, that there was a lot of, there was much more time being done. But that's when we had asked Jeff to go back and see if we could get some, some data on it, specific, on how much time or what, I mean, what was being worked on, I mean, what were the specifics? some data on it, specific, on how much time or what, I mean, what was being worked on, I mean, what were the specifics?
If they were already, if that position was already compensated, I mean, I don't know where the stipend conversation came in because, you know what I'm saying? I mean, that's like a double compensation then.
Well, the recommendation to bring everybody up with it, these positions could each be done by each one of those individuals at any time they could fill in.
But now according to this, we're questioning that. I mean.
Yeah.
Because one, one is requiring a two-year degree versus the other two, having a four-year degree.
My, my two cents is, I mean, to be honest, the payroll clerk, I mean, i- in my four years here has less duties today than it did when I started. And um, I don't believe, my personal opinion is a two percent increase over current salary um is, is out of line. It's, it's in line with the rest of our district that are settling right now. And we have tons, you know, we have about two hundred employees or so, I'll be honest. They all go up and beyond at any different time, you know.
And you said Art made the recommendation for the H, the HR and the bookkeeper positions, salary wise, based on the average around here?
And, and that's how I would reconcile that. That was a third party that gave us that recommendation. I already have a salary for the payroll clerk with a different workload being assigned and.
And you said the payroll clerk was on the higher end of the average salary. Would you have been able to, um, had you had a new person in there when the transition happened with the business manager, if you had a new person in there, would you have struggled? With um, a new payroll clerk as well? I mean, I guess.
I've gotten through that before too.
I, I mean, I, I can understand some sort of comp, compensation. I get the, I get the salary, I get the salary thing and and the payroll clerk only requiring a two-year degree, the others have a four-year degree. So I understand that, you know, maybe it shouldn't be at the same salary as the others, like we had talked last regular meeting, but I do feel like there was. We could, we could give a stipend of some sort for.
And I, like I said previously, I think she can actually quantify how many hours she's worked outside of her normal workday completing tasks and perhaps we should compensate her for that type.
I mean, if, if that's true and she hasn't been compensated for over her, is there, you know, there is workday language in here for whatever reason on a salary thing, there's workday language. I mean, I mean.
But I thought she didn't have that data.
She knows how many hours she would, like, when she brought a laptop home on Saturday weekend.
Yeah, yeah.
I have that.
Okay.
Well, not to dig in the weeds, but some of that was due to.
No.
Nope, okay.
Well, and.
But I mean, and we can compensate for that hourly stuff, I mean, at an hourly rate, not just a arbitrary number, you know, and I'm not.
I, I, I guess I, sorry for stuttering, but yes, I think that some sort of stipends would be appropriate. I, you know, based on the two-year and the four-year thing, maybe not equaling it out, I, I would understand that. But I do feel like some sort of stipend, um, that's fair and.
How about we not call it a stipend and call it a overtime compensation? You know, I, just because we're talking in the name of contracts and other groups want stipends or cash, you know, we just call it compensation for um, hour-year work scope.
You know, and honestly, I mean, how you define compensation or what, what, however you want to look at it, but I mean, I, I like having some type of numbers to go off of. I think that's because I mean, you're just not pulling numbers out of the air and guessing what it should be or what it would be or um, because it was enough, there were enough questions for me to be second guessing my own thought process with it. And so obviously I wasn't clearly documented and I didn't have my data clear enough for me to feel comfortable with it. And so I would like a little more numbers and data on it. But even with that though, I mean, some would argue, is it hourly? Um, I don't necessarily agree with overtime pay because if it is a salary, you know, some employers do have time of their hourly amount and don't even do a full time when people are salaried. Um, because the expectation is anything above salary, you don't get paid usually. So if, if there is special circumstances that you're getting paid, you don't get paid your full salary amount.
Or maybe offer.
I mean, so those are discussions that.
Maybe take the hours worked and see if she wants to give her personal time off, you know, maybe not personal time, but give her vacation days instead of paying or give her vacation days for those hours worked. I mean, that's another way to look at it.
Yeah, but we still have, I mean, I don't want stuff to get dumped on.
No, but you have.
You know, in addition to that, I guess the other part of the argument is, you know, when we were short-staffed in the business office and people were going to her with questions and it was taking up her time and she wasn't able to finish, you know, to do her actual job to leave for her job title of the payroll clerk.
Of that day.
You know, I guess I.
Let's be honest, I mean, I've had salary jobs too and I've worked sixty hours a week sometimes and it was part of that salary.
But not all jobs are like that, though.
No, I know, it's not, but, but that's kind of what you sign up.
A school district is not set up for, it's not a business.
We have, no, we have a transportation guy that he probably puts in that, I mean.
I already got many hours.
Well, great. I mean, we ask certain salary, you know, this is where we draw the line where, I mean, Mr. Carey probably puts eighty hours a week in and uh, you know, our transportation guys on a tall twenty-four salary.
Mr. Carey is our highest paid person in our entire.
So we reconcile that because of the, I mean, his licensing and stuff is again differently, so he's, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and there's a higher expectation there.
But if she went out with that job description to fill another position, then that's, that's an issue. If she went, if she was in the payroll clerk and she was doing extra stuff that was put on her.
But I think there's a question. I think that's the question though that Mike brought up is that when, when, when the previous, when our previous business manager was in that position before and got promoted to the business manager, she took some of her job duties to alleviate for the current payroll clerk to not have to learn those pieces right away. So she took some of those things that normally would have stayed with that payroll clerk, she took them over to the HR director, she took them over with her and kept doing that work. So when she eventually left, they just stayed with the HR director when in actuality they were still the payroll position. Job duties. So the stuff that she was doing was still job duties of the payroll clerk.
I can make a recommendation, I guess, I think we should sit down with these four people at this point and pull it off the meeting tonight and have a negotiation. We can sit down and, and go through this very conversation with them. So there isn't, I mean, if you pass it tonight, I go flop it on her desk and why are you gonna be so upset, Phil?
I do that.
Yeah, and that was one of my questions, are, are, do these people know, are they even negotiating this stuff, you know?
That's a very different conversation from last time.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, very true, yeah.
Cut.
Let's just do that.
I'm good with that.
Hold on.
All right. Thank you. That's the next slide truck with, you know, not far from us, bye.
All right, I want to talk a little bit about we, within our last meeting, we talked about sending a survey out to the public. Possibly with some information so that they would know what they're surveyed for. Um, so this is my first attempt at that. Um, you can see on the, I can get five pieces of paper and an envelope for forty-eight cents. So this would about do it with the return, because we put a return envelope in there as well.
Will we do a mailing service or will we do it ourselves?
I, yeah, we would do a mailing service. Well, I mean, we, I'd probably have kids stuffed in it, but I'd probably send this out because you're talking about seventy thousand.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, just be a little bit.
So, hey, what do you think?
Is this, how much was this, I mean, is this model kind of after like Virginia's, because I heard theirs just went out and I didn't get to see it, so.
Um, no, and yes. They only asked one question. It is a very extensive survey. But a lot of it has to do with the miners' project and they're also reviewing a referendum. So they wanted to see what voters' tolerance are for, and they, they think about doing some remodeling of the auditorium. So there's a lot of stuff on that. There is only one question on academies in this whole project and that is the last one on here, do you support the school boards moving forward with how this concept could work? That question is on their survey, but they don't send any information with it, so it's just a blanket. They're assuming that people know what it.
So this is all they get? This is all they get? Oh, both pieces, okay, good.
From us, Virginia didn't give them this.
Okay, good. I was gonna say, if I got that, I would.
No, yeah, this is what they would get.
And this is modeled off, or this is based for the presentation at the beginning when we go up to the listening section. And the questions that are on here are the questions that we're asking people during the listening sessions. The only reason I put some demographic information on there is that there's room on the page and it's nice to know who's answering the question too.
Well, I think the demographic stuff too, I think what's nice too is it shows if, if there's a missed population that doesn't have the information or doesn't, I mean, I think there's a lot of stuff that I can at least help with, so. No, I, I liked it. I mean, I liked the open-ended questions. It doesn't, it's tough for the collection of the data, but it's good.
Can I ask one question? Do you have children attending Evergilver schools? Yes or no? If yes, what age? What if they're open-enrolled person?
Technically this, because of the mailing, it would only go to our residents, so.
Yeah, but there's residents that open enroll.
Or open enroll.
You know what I'm, you know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying.
That's a good point. So if, if they don't have any here, they're not gonna ask.
If school-aged children, are they enrolled in Evergilver?
Right, there's a better way to define that. Do school-aged children attend our school? Or, or if you, if you have school-aged children, I mean, how old are they and are they attending our school? You know, I mean, some way to, so you can define if, if it is an open-enrolled person.
Good catch, yeah, mm-hmm. Because then at least, because that's gonna also be really good information too as far as the open-enrolled.
Well, then you'll, you'll find out if they open enroll if they like the, the academy either too, you know.
Well, exactly, yeah.
I mean, can you ask the question if they open enroll? They have kids in our district, they do open enroll.
It's not, I mean, we're not asking for names, so yeah.
No. That's what I would, I mean, I would never, some sort of number you can possibly.
We don't want any too much of a wordy thing, but.
I was just gonna ask, well, I mean, if, if they have children in this, you know, children in, in a school age, and then if you're asking if they attend Evergilver, although that do not, are saying no, are open enrolled elsewhere, they have to attend school. So whether it's enrolled in another district or enrolled online or enrolled somewhere.
Or homeschool.
Or, well, that's what I'm saying, online.
But that's open enrollment, right?
Yeah. I mean, any no's are gonna give us the answer that they're open enrolled somewhere else.
Right.
That they're not with us. Yeah, no, that's good.
All right, then we're gonna start tomorrow.
Tom, do you have a?
Now, if we are gonna move forward, there would also be an idea of, would you support a referendum? Put this concept into place?
Um, that's the next.
Yeah, that's kind of getting ahead of us.
Yeah, that'd be like.
I mean, it's a good question down the road.
But we want to stay away from the pitchforks and gasoline questions right now.
Because I, well, I think before we would even look at the referendum, I mean, we would have to give more detail on what that would look like.
Yeah.
And we don't have any of that information at all to even provide to them. I mean, because no one's gonna want to answer on what that is until they get some dollar figures of what that would look like, yeah. So, because I could tell you, my husband would be saying whether or not he would support it right now without knowing the dollars.
So if you're gonna fix that and send it out tomorrow, you say?
Well, I don't know that it'll be tomorrow, but we'll start working on it tomorrow. All right, moving on. Um, this next one could be a long discussion, it could be a real short discussion, but at least starting. So as we're talking about this academy, well, I'm assuming that we're gonna travel down the road there at least a little ways, who knows how long. Um, that's still these K eight, kind of blowing in the wind and I guess what I want to discuss tonight is not specifically what we're gonna do with it, but how we're going to get to the point. What the process, what the process is going to be and the timeline for when we might.
I liked, um, can I just add, I mean, because I, I happened, I went to one listening session at our church and there was just a comment that someone had made about that, that, you know, regardless of the academies and, and I believe they sounded like they were in support of it. But not to forget that we still have all of our K through eight that we have to educate and are gonna be returning to these old buildings and are still, you know what I mean? So it's like, don't forget about, I mean, you know, and, and he clearly understood that we don't know and we haven't been talking about it. I mean, they got that message with, with the presentation, but it was just a really good, like, I mean, yeah, this is great that we're talking about all this wonderful thing to do with our ninth through twelfth graders, but we still have all of these same problems that we have for our K three eight, to not forget about them.
And when you get the report back, I mean, it's, it's been a pretty complicated.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, to be real, I mean, we have a, we have a three, pre-K three through eight to talk about.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, 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 that's kind of looks a lot different because pre-K is a quite a bit different beast than even K, I mean, grade school, you know, I mean, and, and to be honest, I mean, I think it's a great program and I think we should keep.
We have to have it.
Participating and that should be part of the conversation.
I agree.
Um, I, I would say, you know, personally, I don't know how we get to that conversation, but I think, uh, I think that should be part of the collaboration conversation too. I mean, what, what does everybody think that should, how should that be approached? And just start it organic like that and. Well, I mean, do you have any direction? I mean, I don't want to get in the weeds tonight about it.
No, we don't want to get in the weeds, but I just, I don't want to forget about it either.
No.
As far as that part, I, I do think we need to get through, as far as the collaboration, we need to get through this report that's coming to you in, end of May-June and decide what we're going to do with that. And if the answer is yes, we're gonna dive in a little deeper there.
And that would be the time to start.
That would be the time to have a discussion about this then, but it's just a matter of how do we want to do that?
Because that discussion, I mean, that, I agree, I think that would be the perfect timing to say, yeah, I mean, we're gonna dive in. Then we have to be starting to talk about this stuff because part of that, and bringing it to the collaboration, because part of it may be if we bring it in there and say, you know what? The districts want to stay separate. They don't, I mean, we want to still operate separately for our, for our K through eight, which, I mean.
We don't know that question, right?
Yeah, we don't know. I mean, to just be able to have the honest dialogue like we did initially with.
And that's what I said, it's almost premature to even say anything because we don't know if this is gonna be a collaborative thing or if it's gonna be an arms-length thing or, I mean, and then we, to your point is if it's gonna be an arm-length thing, well, we have to deal with K through eight independently from that. And if it's not, well, then maybe we can deal with K through eight in a collaborative kind, I mean, we don't know yet.
No, yeah.
We don't even know if we're gonna get there. But we, we know where we're at, you know, buildings and overhead and all that stuff, but.
I mean, I think the biggest piece that's been, that's been really neat to see and on bringing it back to the collaborative, to at least have the conversation there and then decide, you know, like, just to feel it out there is, is, I feel like it's been a good venue to know, like, yeah, no, people aren't, you know, because we're, even with the academies and even that initial stuff, we were hearing from our community members too. And so was Virginia and so, I mean, everyone was starting to hear about it initially. And I think it's a good venue for us to be able to just have the honest conversation and yeah, whether it ends up, I mean, I, I. yeah, whether it ends up, I mean, I, I honestly don't even know, and that's, I mean, that is the honest, I mean, that's what, what's gonna happen? We honestly have not even talked, I don't even have an idea in my mind.
You must have had conversations with people to think that, well, because I have, and the conversations are come to me that, you know, and, you know, do, you know, what do you, what's gonna happen with the, with the districts? Are they gonna, you know, the sports and what are the team names and what are you guys gonna do? I mean, are you gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna be all together at ninth through twelve or, you know, but then on the other side of it, you know, there's just people that have that talk, that I have to talk with. But on the other side, there are people like, well, you know, I don't understand why, it just, it ain't all one district.
Just combined, yeah.
I mean, not that I wanna get, not that I wanna even talk about that, but it's just like.
I've heard, I've heard both.
Heard both.
Yeah, I've heard both, but.
But in, but in the percentage of what was in favor of, of one big huge district was probably in the ninety percent. People think, yeah, I mean, there's just, I mean, that's, who I, you know, and I'm just, I remain unbiased on it. Just listen, I'm a listener.
Well, and I, like, in, you know, in honest, like, because I really honestly feel like I have an opinion a lot. And I, I really don't have an opinion on, because I, I haven't even let myself think about it because I keep telling myself it's, it is down the road, it's down the, like, when people are like, oh, what's, you know, all the questions that you guys get asked all the time in the listening sessions, I don't know. I mean, we haven't even talked, we haven't even, because I don't know what people are gonna think or want, or, um, I don't know. But I think it's, I think it's the collabor, the collaborative meetings have been really neat because we've been able to have, we've been working for a year now, be able to have open.
Dialogue.
Dialogue, and that's really cool. I mean, that in itself has been really neat to me to see.
And people have been very open about it. I mean, there's not, you know, there's not anger, it's just, you know, or frustrations, not that I've heard anyways. It's, you know, what can we do to, you know, better the opportunities for kids and make this work? So looking at options on how we can make, you know, the different options on what it could look like is what we'd have to come up with and.
But I think the natural one would probably be right after that report and right after the boards determine whether or not, when they vote to determine whether or not it's gonna be W two more.
Well, I mean, that's one surprise, but in all of our travels, we've run into three hundred people, so. All right, any else on that? We'll just hang onto that thought for a moment. I'm talking a little bit about replacement positions, so we've got a couple hanging on there. We've had a shop teacher, full-time shop teacher posted for two months. Apparently has zero applications. We've posted for a plumber for one month now. We did have one apply and came and interviewed and decided he was gonna, he only had a couple years left to retire, so he was gonna pay him where he was at. And we don't have anything further from that, so we're still about that. And then we have to talk about the A D position. So, um, let's do those first to first. What do you guys think? I can't find a plumber.
I mean, we've got plenty of time for the next school year. Plenty, not plenty of time, we got.
There's many, there's many that's to be done this summer.
Well, we're talking plumber A. Okay.
Just keep in mind what we do, right? I mean, that's been the bandage for four years now. Agreed?
Yes, Tyler, we have, right now, because we went to the plumber A posting, I don't have, prior we had two plumber Bs because I just had, I just had someone filling in, so there was another person there at least. Right now I only have one person. So it's kind of putting a strain on that person.
So you're basically saying.
So the question is, do we go back to two plumber Bs and continue to contract out the license or?
Let's do that until we find a plumber A.
Till we find somebody?
Yep. So we're. That's mine, that's mine, dude.
I mean, I would say, I mean, we just, my opinion would be, I mean, permanently assigned because it would be a temporary assignment, right? So then everybody's, you know.
But he doesn't have the license, though.
But we're contracting out anyway, so.
Yeah, but she can't use that position because the job title requires you to have that.
No, we're giving two, two plumber Bs, right?
If we went to, just for a, for a body and a, to help out.
Yeah, just to help with the workload, I mean, just. And, but my point is, is if we did a contingent on finding a plumber A, well, then we're just, we're, we're creating a leave of absence for a whole line of people, am I wrong, Jeff, or?
If it's someone internal, which I don't believe there will be one because we have not had any.
Excuse me, we might have to hire a plumber B.
We would actually have to hire a plumber.
Well, whatever, I guess we gotta do.
But you said you got, so you had a plumber A position posted and nobody, somebody declined it, nobody's applied outside the district?
We've had one application.
Internal?
No, it was external. And he decided to stay right here as that.
Well, what do you want to do?
Well, I mean, I gotta get, for summer maintenance, I gotta get somebody else helping me. I'll just, we'll go with the plumber B, I'll continue to post her plumber A.
I guess I would just like to see more permanency in.
Permanency is a tough one, yeah.
Because, I mean, if, if we could get two plumber Bs and just make them permanent employees and contract it out, I mean, then we just, then everybody knows where they're supposed to be indefinitely. I mean, that's just the way it is because we spent. I mean, how, four years, the four years I've been here, we've been looking for a replacement through the last.
Well, we had one and that person decided to leave.
It'd be really nice to maybe find a plumber B that would want to.
Yeah, we are.
Huh?
He left.
He left. But.
I mean, it would be really nice to maybe find a plumber B that would maybe wanna move up to a plumber A or move up while they're here. I mean, so, that would be ideal.
And the reality is that skill set? We don't pay enough, I mean, if you wanna age it up.
Oh, well, then why are we fooling ourselves and let's just be real?
Well, that's right.
And do the two plumber Bs and have the fact that we're gonna have to contract out then.
It's maddening because it's very expensive.
Well, I, well, then why don't we pay the plumber A more then and actually be competitive and maybe be able to get someone?
We tried getting there a couple of contracts ago and it created a lot of problems.
Well, that's a negotiated rate, too, by the way. I mean, that's, that's out of our control, so.
All right, and then, well, I'll look for.
How far do we go with the posting for?
Huh?
How far do we post it? Have you posted all the news also?
Yeah, we did the newspaper, the, around here, we did the Indeed online. And one other one that I can't think of off the top, I have an online one.
Maybe it's time to go a little farther.
Where do you wanna go?
Try to go to Star Tribune or something?
But if the pay's that crappy, no one's gonna move on here for it. I don't know.
It's, uh, for a plumber A, it's a little over twenty-five dollars now.
With a class C or with a cheap one, here's lessons.
First-class C. People with first-class Cs don't work for twenty-five dollars anymore.
Oh, no.
My family for it. Okay, we've got twelve minutes, so discuss the A D.
Oh, we did have another shop teacher.
Shop teacher.
Oh, shop teacher too.
I don't know, I mean, it's, it's out there in my garden. All right, let's move on to the A D for a couple minutes. So, right now, we currently have one that is a point eight FTE teacher. And he's also on an independent athletic director contract that pays him one thirty-three thousand dollars a year. Plus some health insurance and plus some stipends for one of these. We do continue to do that. That was born from, at one point, they couldn't, the district couldn't find an internal candidate, so they decided to draft a, they had someone independent. That was, the job was to be an athletic director. And that individual resigned. The current athletic director agreed to do it for what he's currently doing. My only, I mean, I, whatever the board wants to pay this person, my only concern would be moving forward is because the fact that the way it's set up right now as individuals in the teachers' union, it's not the most ideal thing in the world because those are the people that eats lunch, you know, and parse the supervisory aspect of being an athletic director. And I don't think that would be different with anyone, given that's particular circumstance. That would put the person.
Would you say that person is a good fit for that, for the athletic director's position?
No, we don't have one, we're, we need to find one.
Was there a go with internal?
I don't know. We have, we're just trying to decide, oh, we're just trying to decide how we wanna find this position. I mean, do you wanna continue to have it as part of a teaching position or do you want somebody outside?
A whole separate position.
A whole separate position.
I mean, if we can find an external candidate, I think that'd be ideal, but, I mean, what's the reality? That probably ain't gonna happen for a half time.
I think there's some things that I would like to see a little different for athletic stuff, you know? I know Virginia does surveys of their coaches.
We passed that.
Huh?
We did pass that, it'll start happening here too.
Oh, we are gonna do that? We just haven't yet?
Just passed it one month ago. Yeah.
Like gone?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, well, I know what, what's I going? The other type are gone. So, but I would like to, yeah, just see a little bit more of, nothing against our current athletic director because he has been. Yeah, he's been doing a great job, but I do think it creates different dynamics though when you are a coworker with people and alongside people for years and years and then having to have, be in a capacity role where you're supervising them too, it's very different, so.
That's part of moving up the ladder.
Anything to clear up that role though, I, I, but, but the role's not defined, it's not, when you're point eight teaching still and still being responsibility of athletic director, that's not a clearly defined role, so.
Hit the street, see if there's external, if there's not. I don't know. What do you want to do?
Now, what if director, if they're not in, are you saying that if they're not in the, um, they're not in the teachers' union and they're, they're, um, separate?
It would be a whole separate contract.
They'd still be here, they'd still be here eating lunches with their, the people that they're supervising.
It's a different role though, I mean.
It's a defined role?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
How do you turn it off from one hat to the next hat when it's two different positions?
When you're constantly within those both roles.
Yeah, but why can't you be that way?
You could.
I mean.
That's a personality trait, that's what.
You can, but, I mean, but point eight FTE with, I mean, I don't know what the contract, I haven't seen the contract or looked at it, but I'm assuming it's a decent amount of time for thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-three thousand.
What is it? Thirty-three, thirty-three thousand?
And some benefits.
Yeah, I mean, I just think if we can spread that into two, I mean, why wouldn't we? Why, why, why is there a need for that to be into one position if we could?
Find a person.
Find a separate person to be able to be an athletic director that can actually be solely an athletic director?
If it was solely an athletic director, is it a full-time position? Could it be? It would be a half-time, so.
Well, it depends on, see, Virginia has, I mean, they're not that much larger than us and they have made it into one, but they have an activity there. So they take care of, that person takes care of all the community and stuff. And all that, all the, you know, the speech, the fine arts.
So if they, if they could do that, because I, I do know that the Gilbert campus has done the community in the past and that's a burden on, on the principal, is that, is that something we could look at too? For the athletic director then?
See, I think then when you start looking at that, you're getting closer to a full-time position.
But isn't there like a different licensing for the, oh, no, forget it.
Yes. There's a community of directors.
But wouldn't you have better, wouldn't you have better luck finding an athletic director to do both those things if we are offering a full-time position?
Absolutely. You won't find them working.
But so, the one we have now is part-time?
Yes.
Because that person's in, he's quiet.
How many, has it worked well, the way they have it set?
I think he would tell you no, not, because he's not doing any job, it's, it's the administration part that is the struggle.
He's his own boss.
Because he's, and he's still in the teachers' union, right? And expected to be supervising over his colleagues.
Well, it's like a shop steward then, unless, unless the, I don't see any.
It's not shop steward.
I know, I know, whatever they call it.
Working for him. No, I'm not saying that it's impossible, I'm just saying it's not the greatest situation.
Well, and that's the piece, is, yeah, I mean, not that it's impossible because it's been being done and it's been being done fine, I mean, but is it ideal? Is there a better way that we can make it work? So why wouldn't we look at making it work better if?
You want for something together for a full-time position?
I will try putting something together, a job description.
For like a full-time position?
Yes, and bring that back to you and you should probably take a little break.